All righty, let's rock and roll. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Wednesday, February 12, 2025. I showed up last night, by the way. But tonight is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Beverly Planning Board. It's Wednesday, February 12, 2025. We are, for those wondering where everybody is, it's going to be a hybrid meeting for us. We have, three of our colleagues are from home, feeling a little bit under the weather, but still joining us, and that would be Ellen Flannery, and Wayne Miller, and Sarah Bartley. So all of our votes tonight will be by a roll call vote. So this is a hybrid meeting. Virtual access to the public will be available via Google Meet. This meeting will be livestreamed by BevCam, thank you BevCam, on the BevCam government YouTube channel only. And pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, Section 40, adopted on March 29, 2023, this meeting of the City of Beverly Planning Board will be conducted in person and via remote participation. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend via remote participation may do so through the Google Meet. Information provided at the end of the agenda.
You don't need to read them.
I just asked you.
No, okay.
Totally did.
No, you don't need to read them.
Okay. Is there anything on this back I need to read?
No.
All right. That being said, let me call the roll so we can establish who is here and who isn't. Sarah Bartley?
I am here.
Thank you. Ellen Flannery?
I am, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Marcus Glenn? George Gomes?
Here.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Here.
Wayne Miller?
I am here.
Derek Beckwith?
Here.
Ellen Hutchinson, I am here. All right, so that is those present, and we will begin. Our first agenda item is number one, subdivision approval not required plan for the properties located at 7 and 22 Rantoul Street, 42, 42 and 1/2, and 44 Cabot Street, and 8 School Street. The applicant is The Goldberg Brothers Real Estate, LLC.
And real quick, for the two members who are, whose video is turned off, pursuant to the laws, your video must be on the entire time for Ellen and Sarah.
Okay, they got started?
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Members of the Board. Miranda Samasko from Globski &amp; Globski at 8 Washington Street, on behalf of the applicant, Goldberg Brothers Real Estate, LLC. And this is an A and R for a num, affecting a number of lots that the Goldbergs own at the bottom of Rantoul Street between Cabot and Rantoul. And the thumbnail version of what is happening here is that five lots are being reconfigured with the end result being one new lot and a more compact, not compacted, but an expanded lot which conforms to 7 Rantoul Street, which is the mixed-use office and residential building, the big brick building. So, and to give you a visual, the whole goal here, well, there's two goals. One is to come up with the new parcel that is outlined in yellow, which gathers in parcels A, B, C, and D from the surrounding lots, and lumps them in with the existing 7 Rantoul Street, which is map 5, Lot 9, to create one new lot. And then the other thing that's going on is that one of these lots, 44 Cabot Street and 42 and 1/2 Cabot Street, actually has two separate multifamily buildings on the same lot. So the Goldbergs are dividing that lot so that they can sell those two buildings separately. So at the end of the day, we have one new lot from this, from everything going on here, four smaller lots that are giving some of their land to 7 Rantoul Street. All of the lots will have frontage on a public way at the conclusion of this, and so it meets the requirements for an A and R plan.
Okay. Questions for Attorney Samasko?
Madam Chair?
Yes, George?
Attorney Samasko, am I correct that the, the sort of 7 Rantoul complex is currently divided between like three or four different lots? Those buildings are contiguous, right?
Yeah, so right now, 7 Rantoul Street, if, I apologize, I don't have photos, but you know, the big brick building?
Yep.
Then if, as you're going up Rantoul Street with the property on your right, there are, I think, three or four industrial slash commercial garages that are sort of sprinkled in the back there. Some of them are on 7 Rantoul Street proper, but one of them in particular is on the 42, 44 and 1/2 Cabot Street property, and yet another one, I think, is on 42 Cabot Street. So it's just a conglomeration that they've acquired over time, and they've made it work, but this is an opportunity to clean it up and make it more rational.
Thank you.
So this does serve to clean it up and make it more organized, more rational?
Right.
Okay.
Which is the new lot number being made? Is it Lot 5?
New lot, well, lots 4 and 6 come out of what was map 5, Lot 3. So, oh, I said that, no, that's not correct, actually. It should be 4 and 5. There's a typo on my application. Thank you.
Other questions for Attorney Samasko? George?
Sorry, more question for Ken. This is an A and R. Does it comply?
Yes, it meets all the requirements for an A and R.
Thank you.
Our colleagues who are participating remotely, do any of you guys have any questions?
No, I don't, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Nope.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. Anything else from board members? Then I would welcome a motion on this matter, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to accept subdivision approval not required plan for 7 and 29 Rantoul Street, 42, 42 and 1/2, and 44 Cabot Street, and 8 School Street, applicant, The Goldberg Brothers Real Estate, LLC.
I have a motion by Mr. Gomes. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Beckwith.
I do have a question, though.
Oh, go ahead.
Is it an accept or is it an endorse?
I always forget.
I believe it's an endorse, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the application is for endorsement.
Happy to adjust my motion.
The intention is correct.
There we go. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number two, to establish a covenant without a performance guarantee for the definitive index plan for Trask Lane, Beverly, Mass., and an 81X certificate for Zero Trask Lane. The applicants are Abbott L. Reeve and J. Stanley Reeve, trustees of Follyhill Associates Trust.
Good evening, Members of the Board. Miranda Samasko, appearing on behalf of this applicant. As the notice indicates, or the reading, we are here, this is a follow-up to the Board's approval of the definitive subdivision plan for Zero Trask Lane that was submitted as a freeze plan and approved in 2024. The plan has been endorsed. We are intending to record the plan, and pursuant to the Board's decision, a covenant or other performance guarantee is required. In this case, we are proposing the covenant as allowed by the statute, which basically says that the applicant cannot sell the lots on the subdivision separately without the improvements that are part of the definitive plan having been completed, and that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds to ensure that there's no violation of that condition. So we have submitted a proposed form of covenant to the Planning Department, as well as an 81X certificate, which basically tells the Registry of Deeds that since this was endorsed and approved last March, I believe, there have been no changes. The plan hasn't been modified, and it's the same plan that was approved.
Is that March of '24 or March of '23?
March of '24.
Okay. Mr. Clausen, did you have any concerns or issues with respect to either, either the covenant form or the 81X?
Nope.
Are there questions for Attorney Samasko on these matters? George?
I guess for my benefit and the benefit of those listening, if I can summarize, and feel free to correct me. This is continuing the definitive subdivision plan that the applicant submitted last year that we finished kind of working on this year. That was a move to preserve their ability to use the zoning prior to the change that the City Council made, I think, last December or something like that, right? Or was it December 20?
2016, 2016.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, this one's been going on.
That's right. Fair, yes. Okay. So this is preserving their applicant's ability to use the pre-2016 zoning on this location. This is just the next step in that process, but this is essentially a legal fiction that will never be constructed as planned. You may object to the use of legal fiction.
Sort of two qualifications. Yes, this is a freeze plan that was not intended to be constructed. It was presented as a freeze plan to this Board very transparently. The plan has been endorsed, so that, that freeze is already, it is perfected with the endorsement of the plan. This next step is to make sure that the subdivision plan approval does not expire. And not to get too technical, but the, the Board's regulations, the city's regulations purport to require the recording of the plan within 12 months, or it can go away, according to the regulations, and be void. I will say that that is not a provision that is found in the statute, so rather than arguing about whether we actually have to record it within a year, we're going ahead to do it. I hope that, I'm sure that confused, was made it more confusing, but it was necessary just to explain that.
Appreciate it.
Anything else? Okay, I would welcome a motion on this, please. Derek?
Madam Chair, I move that the Planning Board accept the proposed, Derek, why do I want to please? Sorry, to our swath of listeners throughout Beverly, the, I move that the Planning Board approve the proposed covenant and the 81, 81X certificate for Zero Trask Lane, submitted by Attorney Samasko.
Second?
I have a motion by Mr. Beckwith, seconded by Mr. Gomes. Is there further discussion on the motion? You guys at home, anything? Nope?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a chance to?
No, this is, this is not a, it's not a public hearing, but thank you. No discussion, so I have to do the roll call vote. I almost said, I almost went the other route. Roll call vote, Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are now going to move to, into public hearings, so I would welcome a motion for us to recess for public hearings.
So move, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Flannery. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Gomes. I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn? George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Thank you. We are now in public hearings. Our next public hearing, or the first one for this evening, is the continued public hearing for Site Plan Review Number 168-24 for Zero Trask Lane. The applicant is Corcoran Trask Lane, LLC. And I see Attorney Samasko again with us.
Hi, good evening. I'll make sure. Okay. While we're getting hooked up technically, just introduce myself, Miranda Samasko, on behalf of the applicant. We have the team here again this evening, Tim Corcoran, Peter Mahoney from Corcoran, Stephen Greenberger, he's here from UTEAL, and he's going to be presenting, doing the design presentation this evening.
Thank you.
And Emily Pathier is also here from Globski, my colleague. When we were last before the Board in January, we presented you with a review, sort of an overall review of the design and layout of the project. It was a productive meeting. Since then, there are a couple of things that have transpired. First of all, we did get all of the peer review, the initial set of peer review, reviewing letters, and in the interim, our team has actually responded to those. So that involves traffic, wetlands, engineering, as well as, oh my goodness, staff notes, and the engineering department's comments. So those are all pending, and I think that in the vast majority of cases, the applicant has indicated in our responses, that we will turn the next set of plans incorporating the technical comments that, that engineering and staff have proposed. So we're in a good position now to, we think, be able to address all of the comments that have been given. The other meaningful thing that happened is that we filed a special permit application with the Board, which is on your agenda for later this evening to set a public hearing. That special permit application would seek to reduce the required parking for this project from two spaces per unit to approximately 1.6 spaces per unit. And I will come back to that in just a moment. Tonight, what we thought we would do is provide sort of, I think, the last sort of segments other than traffic for, that are substantive for the Board's consideration. The first is going to be a review of the sustainability features of the project in more detail. I think that this will be the first private multifamily designed to passive house standards, which is probably coming our way, depending on the building code, but it's no small feat that a private developer is committing to this. We will also review the proposal for the conservation restriction on the open space, and provide a little bit more detail about what is envisioned for that. And then finally, we'll give the formal presentation, if you will, of the inclusionary housing application. And so, just to, I guess, preview what the next steps are, as, as we think about tonight, I think the Board's next meeting is March 12, and we hope that the special permit public hearing will be set down for March 12. We think that there is considerable merit in the application, and it's consistent with decisions that the Board has granted in the past for other projects. We think we're at the point now, as I said, that we've agreed to incorporate all of the technical comments that have been aggregated, as well as incorporate the convenience store into the plans and the CR, and, and formalize everything. Before we can do that, we would like to design to a known parking formula, and so it is really critical that we understand whether the Board is willing to consider the 1.6 as a special permit or not. And we will come to the next meeting prepared to talk to that and give a presentation. We will hopefully have peer review comments and parking and traffic input by the next meeting as well, and you will have that in advance. We intend to be, I wish "is" the wrong word, but we, we really would like to have, if the Board can find its way to make a decision at the next meeting on the special permit, not the site plan review.
That's right.
But it's a component, and it would allow us to then submit updated site plan review plans. So I know that's not an insignificant ask, but we are asking it, and we will do our part to get you all the information that you need to consider that.
And I guess what I would respond to is, we understand your desire, and I think that we can work towards that, but we can't control what questions, issues might come up that might extend it or, and hopefully not. But I understand what you're asking for.
And I-
And we'll do what we can.
Completely understand what you're saying.
I think, you know, your idea of designing to, to what the parking result would be makes sense, so.
Thank you. And then by April 9, I know we're, we're moving along into spring here, that would be the Board's next public hearing. We do anticipate being in a position to give our traffic presentation in full, and I thank you for your patience in, in waiting for that presentation, but by that date, we will have more full comments from the MEPA process. We should also have two more meetings in front of parking and traffic to have honed down their recommendation, or be making our way toward their recommendation, and to have some feedback on peer review. So it will be a much more informed presentation. We'll have more answers to public questions and the Board questions at that time.
I know you haven't started looking at that at all, but as we're looking to plan for March and for the April meetings, I mean, my guess is that's going to be a long, a long part of the meeting. Would you agree? I'm, and I'm not trying to hold you anything.
Oh, no, no.
And I know you haven't looked at anything, but as I'm sitting here thinking about it, I'm thinking, it's probably going to be a big chunk of the evening.
It usually is. And-
All right.
You know, I think our presentation, we will do our best. We, we have presented the, the traffic, but we will do our best to keep it consolidated. We do anticipate that there will be lots of public questions and lots of questions from the Board, and that the peer reviewer may be here. I mean, I think that's one option.
And again, the only reason I'm asking is as we're thinking about, you know, sometimes things come up when we have to schedule things, that I think it makes sense to try to keep that night light, so that we can devote as much time as, as we can possibly do so to, to that. Ken?
Okay.
No?
We'll see.
Oh, God. He's like gonna yell at me later, I know it.
All right. So, thank you for bearing with me through the process discussion, and I think now we're ready to, to, to turn it over to the team to start off with a sustainability, with more information regarding the sustainability. And I'm going to turn it over to Tim Corcoran, and he and Steve will provide that information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tim Corcoran from John M. Corcoran Company. Just going to give a brief overview of kind of our experience as a company with sustainable projects, starting back in 2008. John M. Corcoran Company was one of the first larger-scale apartment buildings in the region to be certified for a LEED project. Since that time, we've continued on with a number of LEED projects that you'll see listed up here. The picture on the top right is, is that first one I referenced, Parkside Commons in Chelsea, that really kind of got us going on this path, and, and I think hopefully set a trend in this area for, for a lot of sustainable design that, that followed us. On staff, we have a full-time energy efficiency manager who is constantly reviewing our portfolio for sustainability opportunities, and we also track all utility consumption with a web-based platform and benchmark all buildings against other comparable buildings to evaluate certain opportunities to enhance our, our building efficiency and operations. As you'll see here, these projects that are listed have been over, you know, the last 15-plus years, and kind of demonstrate a, a strong history of our commitment to sustainable design and, and construction. And a number of these have been done with the project architect here, UTEAL. And then in September 2024, we completed our first passive house project in Union Square. It was the Phase 2 building that is shown in the bottom-right image. It's the right building, so the Phase 1 building on the left was LEED Gold certified, and the one to the right is passive house and LEED Platinum. Those are just currently pending final certifications.
Sir, could I interrupt you for just a moment? My colleague-
I got it.
You got it? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. We were going to ask what LEED, he was asking what L-E-E-D.
Oh, sure. It's Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design.
Thank you.
Sure. That's kind of all I have. I'm going to turn it over to Stephen, who's going to speak a little bit on UTEAL's experience, and give some more kind of project-specific details. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. My name is Stephen Greenberger. I'm an architect at UTEAL. Up on the screen, we have some recently completed projects and projects that are currently under construction that are all passive house, excuse me, certified or aiming for passive house certification. This is something that UTEAL is very committed to, just sustainable design in general, but we are really pushing the envelope with going after the passive house certification, which is the, really the leading edge of sustainable design currently. And I'm going to go into a little bit of the detail of that without getting too in the weeds, but it's something that I'm personally passionate about, and one of my real motivations for being an architect and working in this field. And we also, as Tim noted, they have some in-house expertise. We also have passive house certified architects that work in-house that are dedicated to helping projects achieve that certification. So really, passive house, on a high level, is about reducing the amount of demand of heating and cooling, and also using energy-efficient- heating and cooling and also using energy-efficient methods of HVAC. So in combination, those two things can greatly curb the energy consumption of a building, which is, you know, really, as we know, is a big part of the built environment. So the ways that you reduce the energy demand are building highly insulated envelopes that are also completely air-sealed. So that would entail having high R-value walls, triple-glazed windows that have low solar heat gain coefficients, and then, of course, air sealing from the inside out, so that greatly reduces the amount of heat loss, basically. And then on top of that, using the energy-efficient methods of heating and cooling the building. So as, what we're highlighting here is the use of highly efficient electric heat pumps. These are all individually controlled by each unit, so there's essentially one-for-one unit per, heat pump unit per unit that you build. In addition to that, we have an energy recovery unit. What that essentially does is it tempers the air before it goes into the building. So for instance, in the winter, the cold air that's coming in passes by the hot air that's exhausting, and that weight and heat actually mitigates the amount that you need to heat the air before it goes into the building. So all of these things work in combination to just greatly curb the amount of energy your building consumes. So those are kind of the specific passive house principles. And I will say, the other thing that really sets passive house apart from some of the other certifications, even LEED, which is great, is that passive house has incredibly stringent testing. And so our design will have to pass a third-party review before it can even go into construction. And then during construction, there is a rigorous testing process, so not only are we as designers held accountable, but the contractor is held accountable to meet the, make sure the design actually achieves the goals that we're setting out to achieve. So it's kind of a very exciting but very high threshold for designing. I also just wanted to highlight a couple other sustainable features. Obviously, there's ample open space at this site, and so connecting to that and providing access to walking trails is another great way to, you know, provide that. And then we will also be providing a solar PV-ready roof and EV-ready parking spaces, as well as just interior bike storage to encourage riding your bike and pedestrian traffic. And then lastly, there's an assortment of landscape features that contribute to the sustainability of this project as a whole by limiting irrigation and using, like, native plant species and just making it as basically low maintenance as it can be. I'm happy to answer any questions and go more into the weeds as required, or, yeah.
George?
What's the delta in terms of energy demand between something that's passive house and something that would meet, you know, current energy code, roughly?
So I couldn't tell you that exactly. It's, I think-
Yes. So-
I'm sorry, did you ask me something?
No.
No.
She just- She assumed when.
Technical disorder here.
Everybody did. Let's be honest.
Mr. Greenberger, just maybe I missed this in the beginning, so I guess I'm asking for a PSA from you guys. Why are you committed to doing projects at this level of efficiency? A, so that's the good one. B, the question I have is, how much more expensive does it make it for tenants on the other side?
I would want to maybe kick the second part to the ownership. I think that there is an added cost, but I don't think that, what we discuss a lot in our firm is that as this is gaining some traction and contractors are doing it more and more, the actual premium to do it is getting less and less, and that's what we're seeing all the time. I couldn't tell you what the actual delta in rent would be, but I think that that's, we're going in the right direction, and the, a lot of the design elements, like adding insulation, is not a big project cost. It's just almost common sense to do at this point. Some of the other features definitely add project costs, but it's, you know, and in terms of your first question, why do we do it? I mean, I don't think this is what you were asking, but personally, I'm just hyper-aware as an architect of the impact of the built environment and want to design more sustainable buildings. And also, we, UTIL as a firm and in partnership with Corcoran, we are just interested in being on the leading edge of that discussion and not following.
Could I follow? So are you saying that there hasn't been a cost-benefit analysis done?
There is definitely added cost to build to this standard.
Right, I would assume that.
Yes, yes.
But what about the benefit of it, the cost savings?
The cost savings, there are certainly some that are attributable to the envelope and the efficiencies that are gained as a result of that. The way we have these designed is that the tenants will pay for usage of electricity, water and sewer, and things of that nature. So I think the same thing would apply to the tenant costs as a result of the design that their costs, their associated costs should be, you know, they should realize those efficiencies as well, as well as the common area systems that the owner is footing the bill for.
So it wasn't meant to be a gotcha question at all. I'm just really curious. Global warming, sustainability, I mean, to me, you know, this is good news. This is good to see. But, you know, the other side of it, too, is the business side of it, and this is more expensive to construct this way. But over time, if you're looking out years and years, and if you're looking at, you know, paying for the utilities, the heating, the cooling, et cetera, then obviously the more efficient that you can get, then over time, you will see the savings upfront and then long-term, you know. So I was looking for that.
Sure.
And the way I framed the question in terms of how much more expensive or whatever was more just to give, you know, make sure that we're looking at the heart of the matter. Is this driving rents up? Or is it, is it something where when you're looking at saving on utilities over time, you know, that, you know, it's a net zero in a way? Yeah, I'm just wondering where we are with it. You've had more experience, I think, than any developer team to come before us on building LEED-certified properties, large ones. And so this is an opportunity to hear a little bit about the why and the, what does this mean for the business, what does this mean for your tenants?
Yeah, and I'd just add to that, Peter Mahoney with John Corcoran Company. So I think everything the guys just said about, you know, for the baseline reasons for doing this are true. There's no, there is no payback, to answer your question, on immediate payback on this. The majority of the savings fall to the residents. We think eventually the market will recognize that. Today, if somebody walks into our building or another building that's not passive house certified, it's not, there's not, the market does not recognize that. We think in the long term, as you point out, this is, one, the right thing to do, and, two, it will have value in that respect. There's other intangibles. I mean, there's, there's some down the road, there's potentially better financing. You see that sometimes from some of the government agencies. Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac have some benefits if you have set certain energy efficiency benchmarks. So there's other, again, longer-term paybacks, but you couldn't sit here and say, I'm paying X more to do this, and I'm going to get it back in five years. It's not there today.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a comment, Adam Chaff.
Joe, please.
I'm not a professional in this field, obviously, but my discussions with people around the, around the new building codes would indicate that buildings like this cost around 2% to 3% more at most to build to these higher standards. Is it not, we're not talking orders of magnitude here. It's a very small increase cost as, in my experience.
3% to 4%, but that's a pretty good, I mean, it's in that range, yes.
Yeah.
It's not double.
Yeah, I actually said 2% to 3% is what I've come to understand.
Is there not any credits given when you go for this and pass this sort of thing?
Yeah, there are some. There are, there's a MassSave credit, and there is a, there is another credit, and it's per unit. I would say it's significant. It's a few thousand dollars per unit, but it's, in the scheme of a project this size, it's not-
So relatively speaking-
Yeah.
Everything kind of washes out between construction costs and...
I can tell you, having appeared before this board with developers who don't have the breadth of experience and the depth of resources that Corcoran does, for smaller-sized projects, you know, the delta on this is real, and that's, there's a reason why most of the projects that have come before the board have not tried to do this yet, because you need at least upfront, the upfront cost, while it's 2% to 3%, it's 2% to 3% of $100 million, for example, and that equates to $2 to $3 million. So the numbers do become real numbers, and they can be prohibitive for some of the smaller projects. So, you know, one of the benefits that this developer brings to this project is the ability financially to offer some enhanced sustainability. And I can tell you, the other reason is, you know, the city of Beverly, whether it's through the administration or this planning board, has made clear that one of the things you want to see are more sustainable buildings. And I can tell you that this team was briefed on that as we planned this project.
Should we advance, or?
Yeah. Anything else?
If there are any questions.
Yep.
Okay. I think we're good right now.
All right, thanks, Steve. So, another piece of this that contributes to the sustainability, and we think is a very significant benefit to the city, is the ability to offer the undeveloped open space on this 77-acre parcel back to the city as permanently preserved open space that cannot be built on. And so what you see in this slide, you see the building, the Site A and Site B highlighted with the buildings on them, and everything else that is shaded within that property is part of the, is part of the open space parcel. We have some of it highlighted in green to call out the locations of the proposed trails. These are, in some cases, and in most cases, they are already existing, and they will be preserved in that fashion and left to be used by the public as well as the residents of the project. So this plan highlights where the trails are on the property and the connections. We stop at the boundaries of the property because some of those trails do continue on to either City of Beverly land and in some cases, onto private property, but we will make the connections available as part of this proposal. And so the proposal is to grant a conservation restriction to the city, most likely through the Conservation Commission. And we have also spoken to other land trust organizations to inquire about interest in co-holding it, if the city, in fact, would prefer to have a coholder of the CR. And suffice it to say, we think that the organizations that we have spoken with are all pretty consistent in that they will agree to hold CRs that are part of a development package. And this, even though it's not required, would be a condition of site plan review. So they would be willing to dig in and take a good look at this and are probably pretty receptive. But their policy is, as conservation organizations, that they do not sort of enter the fray until the board or whatever permitting agency has decided to approve the conservation restriction, because they don't want to be influencing the outcome of the permitting process. But we've made those preliminary conversations and are happy to work with the city to make sure that if they want a coholder, that there are some options available. Couple of other things to point out is that the conservation restriction would preserve Duck Pond, which is adjacent to Colgate Park, and I'll come back to that in a minute. Another issue is, or another benefit, and something that we want folks to appreciate, is we're not just giving, you know, wetlands that couldn't be built on anyway. There are approximately 35 acres of upland acreage that would be included in the CR. So it's a significant restriction on what could happen in the future on that property. We also are proposing, you probably can't, difficult to see here, but that the next set of plans will include a location for three public parking spaces for members of the public to utilize the trails. They'd be sort of at the base of Site B on the way to the, almost on the way down to the water tower. Just to make sure. We would also, as part of this process, either as part of the CR or by way of a separate easement. The next slide, is this your? Is it just, okay. No. Not that one. Thanks. So another sort of item that we hope to, that we want to work with the city on is, currently, Colgate Park is at the end of Colgate Road. Folks are probably familiar with it. It includes a playground, a significant amount of what visually on the ground looks to be part of the park, and you can see existing, I don't know, do we have a, okay, there we go. This existing field here, here's the playground at the end of Colgate Road, then there's, this existing field is actually on Zero Trac Lane. It's not city property. So we would make sure that there's a recorded easement to memorialize that being for public recreational use, either as part of the CR or separately. I guess, finally, we would propose that the CR would, you know, could be conditioned as site plan review as a condition of the certificate of occupancy for, I would say, one of the first buildings, and we can discuss that as the time comes. So we are excited to bring that opportunity to the board, and I think the next... Okay. So the next item to review, unless folks have questions about the CR. Yes.
Nate, did you have a question?
I had a question more about the trails.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, George. So those trail lines you showed earlier, are those set in stone, or you mentioned that they kind of extend out to the edge of the property. I just had a question about if you're trying to incentivize people to walk or ride bikes, that those trails go somewhere, that there's a thought process behind it, so it's not just, oh, it's fun to get out and ride your bike and walk- So it's not just, oh, it's fun to get out and ride your bike and walk around, but, you know, to actually give someone the option to not use a car.
There, there's only so much we can do to make connections over other people's property is the problem. So we, we can connect to, and, and there are, um, connections available within the existing driveways and, um, over to the Oberlin, um, emergency.
Mm-hmm.
Exit, but we're not in a position to.
Yeah, no, you can't go through someone else's yard.
Make trails connect over, for example, Folly Hill's property.
Yeah. But I guess just the general direction of some of the trails, is there a thought process behind that? So it generally leads towards something that someone would want to walk or bike to? Or is?
Um, I think we're, we're open to, to doing that, but we're also, what, there, there are existing trails on the property. So we're pretty, we're staying pretty true to what already is on the ground.
Gotcha, okay.
Is the short answer.
George, did you have a question?
I did. Um, all right, so I heard seventy-seven acres full property. You mentioned thirty-four acre, thirty-four acres of upland that you weren't developing?
Thirty-five upland, yes.
Thirty-four. What are, what are the number of wetland acres that would be part of the conservation restriction?
Um, so we're, we're, so sixty minus thirty-five. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, I mean, we haven't surveyed the CR, so I want to be careful, but I mean, the, the general, um, numbers that we've been working with is an overall site of seventy-seven acres. Of that, there will be sixty-five plus or minus undeveloped acres and between sixty and sixty-five of those will be part of the CR. And about thirty-five of the CR acres will be upland, leaving, my mouth is just bad, twenty-five.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Further questions?
Does any of the trail connections hit the Colgate or the County Way Fire Road?
I don't, Stephen, I'm sorry, I can't. Really sorry.
No, you're.
Last time I did it, it went away, so I just didn't want to. Yeah, this one?
Yep.
Yeah. One of them does in fact, um, line up with Colgate Road. At, at County Way, excuse me.
Attorney Samasko, could I just ask you to use the pointer so the people at home can?
They can't see that.
They can't see it?
Not because we're presenting that.
They can probably use the mouse.
Yeah.
Oh.
Think people can probably see the cursor.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's the outlet to County Way.
That's County Way?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Or it's, it, it's not exactly onto County Way, it's, but it's the outlet to the rest of the emergency access.
The, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Does the fire road currently cross the property? It looks like it must, just based on where it terminates.
I'm sorry.
Does the, does the County Way Fire, Fire Road currently cross the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's, um, yeah.
Basically, the one that's going of the, you know, the, um, yeah, that cross intersection there, that is the fire road essentially, because that's where it ends, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's challenging with this site. Every plan is, it's very hard to read it, so, um.
Any other questions before we move on to, uh, inclusionary housing? Microphone, my friend.
I just want to clarify, did you mention, uh, parking for the public for these trails?
Yes, we are, um, proposing to put in three public parking spaces for, for trail access.
That's in addition to the, uh, to one point six?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Excuse me. Yeah.
Everybody all set with conservation restriction discussion?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, we submitted an inclusionary housing application with the original site plan application. I'll just hit on a highlight or hit the highlights of what was included in that. So under the zoning that pertains to the, to this project, which is, which is the 2016 zoning, um, the requirement is that twelve percent of the units be permanently restricted at eighty percent AMI. Twelve percent in this case equates to fifty-three units, which is a pretty significant, um, number of, uh, affordable units coming on to the market permanently. And I thought it was interesting to compare some of the projects that the board has approved recently that are entirely affordable, just by, by way of comparison. The Briscoe has about, uh, the Briscoe Senior Center has about eighty-three units of entirely, um, affordable housing and each of the two Anchor Point buildings are at like thirty-seven and thirty-eight units. So, um, this is a, a, another large chunk, um, of affordable housing for the city's, um, subsidized housing inventory. Corcoran is very experienced in this field. They in fact actually, um, manage and own, um, a number of, uh, affordable housing properties that are entirely affordable, as well as the inclusionary units, um, in other projects. So they will, um, they're, in their experience, they usually hire, um, a third party to conduct the lottery. That's a lot of work involved with that. And so they will be engaging a third party to prepare the marketing materials that will be submitted to the state and to conduct the lottery. Um, and then they are all appropriately certified by, um, the Commonwealth to, um, handle the certification of compliance going forward, once the units are occupied. We have, uh, mentioned to the city in, in our application that we are willing to work and that they're, the affordable units are indistinguish, that they're, the affordable units are indistinguishable from the market rate units and that they are, um, not sort of, um, congregated in one corner of the building. And as you can see, the, the red dots here are, um, it's not, not super easy to see, but, um, I think the visual is appropriate. These are the floor plans for each of the six buildings. And you can see that the, the affordable units are, are distributed evenly among the floors and the buildings. We have some, um, information, this was in your packet, as to what the rents look like based on the eighty percent AMI. And so you can he, see here that for a studio unit, the maximum rent would be, um, almost twenty-three hundred dollars. Um, that includes a utility allowance. Um, and so these maximum rent numbers all include, um, what the utilities would be. For a one bedroom, it would be about twenty-six hundred dollars. Two bedroom, approximately twenty-nine hundred dollars. And a three bedroom, um, about thirty-two hundred dollars. So, um, and these are obviously based on twenty-twenty-four numbers, so that these rents would change as AMI numbers change annually. Yes.
The rents, residents pays the far right cost. They, they all have utilities. The resident rent is the proposed rent, the far right.
Okay.
The utilities are all, all.
Sorry, I misstated that, thank you.
The resident rent is the far right cost.
Okay, yes. I think I can provide, um, I think the only other thing I wanted to, to just anticipate the question would be the unit mix for, um, the affordable. So, um, this is, uh, calculated proportionally to the, to the mix of units for the market rates. There would be, um, four studios, uh, approximately twenty-eight or, or not approximately, but twenty-eight one bedrooms, seventeen two bedrooms and four three bedrooms would be offered. And we've provided that information in, um, the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Jared, you have a question?
Thank you, uh, actually, that was, one of my questions was, um, the breakdown and I'm looking at the chart here in the materials that we received in, for the inclusionary units. But you also have one bedroom, one bedroom plus, two bedroom, two bedroom plus. So, um, the same percentages are holding true for the one bedroom, one bedroom plus. And, and just.
Correct.
What is the difference between a one bedroom, one bedroom plus?
Um, the plus denotes basically a den, which it is not built out to a bedroom standard. It doesn't meet the Board of Health requirements for a bedroom, but it's, as, um, folks will appreciate, especially during the pandemic, that the demand for home office space grew exponentially. So that's what, um, those den units are proposed for. And I think six of the one, of the twenty-eight affordable one bedrooms will be one bedrooms with dens. And three of the seventeen two bedrooms are proposed to be two bedrooms with dens. And again, that is proportionate to what's offered market.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, and, and you're also proposing, we've had some applicants in the past who've come and, and they would, uh, they wouldn't designate a unit per, um, per se. They, it'd be more of a floating, um, you know, thing, but so, uh.
Well, let me, let me clarify that. In my experience, what happens is when we submit the inclusionary zoning application, such as we have here, um, both the, the city and the state want to see that we've distributed those units and the board does. However, in the regulatory agreement, um, they are designated as floating units. The reason here, we do not have different finishes in these units. So, um, the things that trigger, um, you know, to the, where this comes into play, and stop me if I misstate this, but if a tenant that met the income qualifications originally, in year three, no longer meets those qualifications, then we're, they're not required to boot that tenant out. They, the tenant may have to pay the new market rent, but then the applicant is soon, you know, when a new unit becomes available to substitute as an affordable unit, they fill that unit. So if it, so that's, that's what the floating denotes.
Generally, yes. Uh, so, uh, everyone certifies when they move in and they certify every year that they still qualify. You're allowed to earn, your household is allowed to earn up to a hundred and forty percent of the then, um, maximum income. If you exceed that, then you're no longer qualifying as an, as an affordable household. And we typically allow them, we'd offer them, if they would like to move to a different one, it's easier for us to manage if they're all the same, but they have the right to stay there, in, in which case we would just designate a new, same size, same type, uh, apartment as the next affordable.
Okay, that was actually my question, is what happens if, you know, because you have them locked like that. Okay, great, that's, that's all, thank you.
Attorney Samasko, um, did you have any flexibility in the affordability level being eighty percent of AMI? In other words, was there, did you have flexibility to take it lower? I'm always, I'll state this upfront, I'm always a little bit disappointed when affordable housing comes in at eighty percent of AMI. Because in this case, AMI for twenty-twenty-four for one person is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Eighty percent of that is ninety-one thousand. For two people, AMI is one hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty, and eighty percent of that is a hundred and four thousand. My concern is that are we meeting the needs of the people who don't earn eighty percent, but maybe they're at sixty percent? And I guess what I'm asking is, is, was there any flexibility in the zoning that you could have done something like that? And if, if there was, did you give any thought to that? Because it seems to me, to be frank, my opinion is, for what it's worth, that it's people at the lower levels of AMI that really need the assistance.
So the answer to that question, I'm going to let, um, Corcoran also chime in, but, um, there certainly is flexibility under the zoning for an applicant to offer deeper levels of affordability. Although in twenty sixteen, the, it was really the old zoning.
Yeah, that's why I was asking the question, because I know now there is, but I didn't, since you're operating under twenty sixteen, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, it wasn't built in, but I, I think it could be managed, um, because you're meeting the, you're more than meeting the requirements. But we wouldn't, for example, have the ability to say, oh, we'll do a blended rate if, at ten percent instead of twelve percent, right? That, that, there's not the flexibility there.
Between the twenty sixteen and the current.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and then as a practical matter, we, I can tell you that, you know, the development transactions or the purchase price for this land assumes a certain number of affordable units at a certain level. And so there is some, there's not necessarily a lot of wiggle room for the applicant, um, but I, you know, we do hear your concern and, um, it's not a surprising one, so, um, but this is a, a project that's, um, there are many pieces, um, to the puzzle and to make the transaction work.
It's just that this, you're proposing four hundred and forty units. And I think I was just hoping that within the four hundred and forty units, we could find some that were frankly more affordable.
I think, um, we, we hear that concern, Madam Chair.
I appreciate that, thank you. Other questions on affordability, inclusionary housing?
I'd echo what you said, so thank you for raising that, Madam Chair.
Anything from our colleagues watching from home or participating from home, I should say?
I'm comfortable with the presentation, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Sam? Thank you, Sarah. Do you have anything else?
Did I miss anything? Um, no, I think, I think that's what we hope to cover tonight. We're, um, happy to, um, have had a chance to answer the questions.
Okay, and we appreciate that, thank you. Uh, we will open it up to the public. This is a public hearing. And again, tonight was on three things. One was the conservation restriction. The second was the affordability, and what, what was the third one that I'm missing? Sustainability, of course. So, um, if you'd like to be heard and I would, you can speak on whatever you want, but again, we're trying to, uh, and I think we've, the applicant has done a really fine job for these three meetings, breaking down this whole process into segments. And I think everybody knows that the most important segment is going to be parking, traffic, all of that. But right now, tonight is just, uh, we looked at, as we said, the sustainability, the affordability and the conservation restriction. So again, you could speak on anything you want, but if possible, we'd ask you to, uh, try to comment, um, limit your comments if you could to those three topics, but I won't hold you to that. So if anybody wants to be heard, please step to the podium, let us know your name and address, and you can make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Knight, Cherry Hill Condominiums, Ford Duck Pond Road, Beverly, Mass. I'd, I'd like to stick to just, you know, the, the plans, but every week we come prepared for one thing, and by the, by the time we get to prepare for that, it's gone and now we can only move on to the next. We've brought up the parking before.
Yep.
So that is a, an issue with mine, and I'd just like to clarify some numbers.
Please, go ahead.
I'm strictly talking Lot A, which is what affects us the most. Lot B is up the hill, three football fields away and an elevation of a hundred and feet, eight feet uphill. So I think we could agree that there's not going to be cross parking. Maybe you would walk and park up in Baker's Ave or something like that, but I think that we've banded these numbers together and equally, they.
But I think that we've banded these numbers together, and equally, they come out to two parking spaces per unit. Lot A does not come out to that. As far as I can see, we're talking 187 units for, I mean, excuse me, what are we talking for Lot A? 287 units. And we're talking 517 parking spaces. That boils down to 1.8 parking spaces per unit. We band them all together, Lot B has much more, and it all looks good on paper. But that's the one I'm talking about, because that's the one that's in the middle of us, and we're going to get affected by, the most by it. And I know that in this presentation, and submitted already before the board, they've talked about the reduction in parking, and they've used Folly Hill as the poster child for why they would not need it. I don't have the numbers in front of me, how many units they have per parking space, but it's not enough. And I've sent in something to the board here, just to demonstrate what the problem is. We don't have enough parking spaces during snow events. And if you possibly show the pictures up on the board that I've taken just the other day after the parking, after the snowstorm, you'll see exactly what the issue is. All of the cars have to move somewhere while the plows come. The entire length of Trask Lane is yellow curb. There's no parking, it's illegal to park anywhere on Trask Lane, all the way down. But during a snow event, all the cars have to move that entire half a mile, quarter mile, what it is, every spot along that curb is taken by cars parking. I'm not sure if that's available yet, but I've taken a continuation, pictures, the entire length of it, and you'll see not one spot open. They're all parked into Trask Lane, which would block off emergency access. You know, it's a nightmare waiting to happen. So do you think you'd be able to pull those? Okay, thank you. And now, what we're talking about is going down Trask Lane with those cars parked in the middle, an additional 2,000 trips a day. Just every one of them, that, every, this is just driving down the road, does not, this is the nightmare that would be.
Sir, can you walk us through what we're seeing here?
Okay, so I'm driving out of Cherry Hill Condominiums, and I take a right, traveling towards Route 128. The construction site is, shares our driveline, Cherry Hill Condominiums, Duck Pond Road. So I'm now, where my first picture is taken, is leaving Duck Pond Road, and it just shows all of the cars parked from Folly Hill Apartments.
Is that road we're looking at, that's Trask Lane that you're?
That's Trask Lane. As soon as I turn on my driveway, every one of those cars is parked on Trask Lane. And the curb that they're parked against is yellow, which means no parking. But the only way that they could park or move during snow removal is to park on this road. And we're using this as an example as to why we don't need enough, we don't need two parking spaces. Well, these pictures, and I've taken them the entire length of it, the next one is around the next bend, the next one's around the next bend, every single one of them along the way is cars parked illegally. Because those buildings that you see behind there, that's Folly Hill Apartments. They don't have anywhere to put their snow, so they have all the cars parked out on Trask Lane. And if you look at the site where this proposal is, you don't have a Trask Lane. The only thing near there is Cherry Hill Condominiums, parking, and Folly Hill, I mean, Apple Village Apartments. They don't have this road to illegally park on. This entire length, all the way down to the highway, is taken up with just parking from Folly Hill during snow removal. We have snow coming up. Anybody is welcome to take a ride down there the next day, and this is exactly what you'll see, illegally parked along Trask Lane.
Could I interrupt you for just a moment?
Sure.
Are you instructed as to a timeframe to move your cars out of the parking lot and move them?
I don't live at Folly Hill, I live at Cherry Hill Condominiums, but this is all Folly Hill Apartments.
I see, okay, I apologize.
But I do believe it's coordinated for them to all move, but it's there all day. Some will park overnight, some will just park there. That's what happens if you know snow's coming. They move out there. And a number of them, as I've mentioned many times in the past, will park in our parking lot, because there's not enough room, and they don't want to get towed out there. So our spaces get taken up. This is the biggest concern with any reduction in parking. And we already have, according to the plans, a shortage to 1.8 parking spaces. Lot B has a road and Duck Pond Road. This is a tiny little intersection. I haven't seen one study done on the impact of that tiny little intersection. Two cars can't even enter that driveway at the same time. There's another picture I have with a tractor trailer stuck.
That intersection was what you were talking about at the last month's, okay.
Yes, not one study. It's all done out in the city, all done out everywhere else except for ground zero. We're the ones that are going to take the brunt of this, us and Apple Village, who hasn't had a say in it. The owners have a say in it, but the people who are going to suffer on the ground. And if we look at these pictures, another issue is that we're building up our driveways, the elevation of it. I know that this hasn't been discussed, but it really should be, because the driveway to entrance there is, starts at 15 feet below grade, then it goes up to the parking lot of 10 feet below grade. That's 20 feet from my window, which is 35 feet below grade. All of that runoff, now we've taken all of this, all of this land, and it's all going to run back into our yard. In every one of these pictures, we're faded out, we're a valley. All of this is going to run down. Will we please take a look at the complexity of the drainage that goes down? It's going to drown us. We've never had, my apartment, or my condo is ground level, I walk out, I've never had a puddle there, but I could guarantee you, we're going to be flooded after this. Every ground unit is going to be flooded, because you're building up, 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 and you're not allowing for any drainage. You're putting a wall at the end of Duck Pond Road that's going to take any runoff that would have gone that way and gone down the hill, is now going to come back and drown us. So we're going to be overrun by the water runoff, we're going to be overrun by the parking. Everybody suffers but the developers, so I guess. And the other part is, we've talked about these trails, this will get back onto it. Not one of these trails is accessible to anybody else other than them. We can't walk around, we could come up and visit their property, but we can't go through these trails to town unless we cut through Apple Village or Folly Hill Apartments. They don't have access to it, nobody does. There's no way to get to the city other than cutting through Folly Hill or Apple Village. There's no other access or the highway. We cannot take a bicycle without trespassing anywhere else in this city. I guess that's it for now, I thank you for your time.
Anyone else here tonight who wishes to be heard?
Hi, Karen Johnson. I live at 4 Duck Pond Road, Beverly. How many people do you know that earn $91,000, which is the reduced rate rent, or any of the regular market rate rent apartments? How many of those people don't have a car? And aren't going to need a parking space? I don't really know anybody like that. So I think the ask for reduced parking, I think that Beverly has a regulation or a requirement for two spaces per living unit, is that right? For a reason. I think this is kind of the poster child for this. There are no goods or services up there. A convenience store, we did talk about that at another meeting, I believe it was discussed that it's hard to get somebody for long-term rental for that type of store, and you're not going to buy your weekly groceries there. You're going there for like something you forgot or some quick purchase. So it's not really, it doesn't offer you something that you need long-term. So I don't think the parking, I don't know how that works for this. I'm also concerned about that intersection that Patrick talked about. There are actually two entrances to Apple Village that feed into that. So there would be six roads feeding into that intersection if the parking garage is built with two entrance exit roads for that. So is there going to be a redesign of that intersection? Is that what happens when they do a traffic study? I don't know how that works. Does anybody have any idea on that? Like they require them to redesign it? Because right now, it's not, it can't handle the traffic that's there. It's not, it's not a perpendicular intersection. When you come up Trask Lane to go to Apple Village, you have to diagonally cut across in front of Duck Pond Road. So, you know, it's just, it's tight up there, as Patrick said. So that, those are two big concerns, the parking on that. Also, is the developer presented a plan that had a driveway access from the end of Duck Pond Road that would curve back around the back of the 4 Duck Pond Road condo building? Is that, can we talk about that? Is that like out there? Like, has that been publicly presented or not? I don't want to bring up something that hasn't been. Okay, so I'm just wondering if you know, are you planning on blasting out that area, filling it? How are you guys, is there like a design that has been presented for that? And then in conjunction with that, are there zoning regulations for driveways that are on a property line with your neighbor? Yeah, yeah, I got a lot of questions, I'm here for some answers.
I don't want there to be misunderstandings, we're not ignoring your questions.
Yeah, no, it's okay, yeah, I'm just bringing them up, I don't know, like, who can answer them?
Yeah, and I think, just procedurally, my, our understanding was, we were sort of taking public comment, but not necessarily addressing it within the hearing, and we're going to have a list of the comments to address.
Okay.
I can assure everyone that I've been keeping a very detailed log of everyone's public comment, and I distribute it after every meeting to the applicant as well as the board. They might have even wanted to print it out to prove it. Yes, so everybody is receiving every public comment.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I don't know how it, yeah, I've never done this before, so I don't know how it, you know, actually works. But also, I'm wondering how the traffic on Duck Pond Road will be managed during the construction, so that we can act, because, you know, that road's going to probably be widened to accommodate the two, you know, traffic going in both directions. Right now, there's not a lot of traffic on it, but there, you know, if that is, if Duck Pond Road leads to a driveway to the apartment's development, then there's going to be a lot more traffic, so I assume the road's going to be changed. So just wondering how that's going to be handled during the construction. So it's another area that I'm looking for some information on. So my last thing is, if you're going to do excavation, you talked about doing a pre, or you're going to do blasting, a pre-blasting and a post-blasting building survey of Duck Pond condos, are you willing to provide a certificate of liability from your insurance carrier to cover us in case of damages? So that's what I got. Thank you very much.
I'm Brian Johnson, condo, Cherry Hill Condos, apartment 4219. I have a question. Some time ago, there was a proposal brought in this matter concerning doing some renovations of the exits 43 and exit 45, and route 120, route 62 and route 1A successively. Is that matter still on the program? I for the life of me cannot figure out how a renovation of exit 43 or exit 45 is going to do anything to rectify 2,000 more cars in this proposal. There's still only one way in there to get out to route 128, so I'm just curious as to what the thought is about that proposal. I don't see how it has anything to do with this project.
Mr. Johnson, I believe we said at the beginning of this meeting that the April 9th meeting is probably when we're going to get into that, just so, just so you're aware. April 9th Planning Board meeting is when the traffic presentation's going to be done
Anybody else who's present who wishes to be heard?
Mind if I ask one more question?
Sure.
You know, this has more to do with the freezing and the zoning and so forth. I know that, working in the trades all my life, I know that when I'm working in a number of buildings here, you have to go by the old codes, they don't have the right fire escapes, you can't make them, put them in until they resubmit and change the plans. Now you have to go by the new set of regulations. And I'm wondering why this has been allowed to go grandfathered in from 1987 and then continued, but each time we changed the standards of it. We've removed an access road right next to us. I wonder how, if that played a part in the approval of this? And now that access road was eliminated. I have it here, the original plans, which I also said in, in the original covenant and in deeds, they show an access road, or an easement. I don't know whether that emergency road down the end was accessible back then. I don't know if this easement was a part of the plans, but now this easement goes away, and we don't have access to the other side. So doesn't that change? Wouldn't this all have to be resubmitted every time we break it into a new lot, change this and change that? If this were a house, we'd have to start from square, from zero, and resubmit it.
I don't know, I don't know about the loss of the access road, I don't, I.
It's all, it's all changed, why isn't this being re-looked at again?
Ken, can you help me out here?
Are you referring to a 1980 subdivision?
Yes, and then the continuation, we've now frozen it in because of those. But now, we changed. But now, we changed things. We're freezing it, but we're changing it.
In 2016, there was a subdivision plan approved by this board. The, sort of-
And it had an easement on it, didn't it?
I don't know. But the owners at the time appealed that decision because there were several conditions that they disagreed with. They went to the land court, and they vacated all but, I think, two of the conditions and sent it back to the board to be reconsidered. That is what was, that is what was approved last March. It took almost seven years for that to happen.
With an easement. Please look back at it, and you'll find an easement right attached to our, every one of the plans prior to this submittal has easements within there. To my knowledge, I'm just a handyman, so what do I know? But if, as far as I can see, that's a problem for me. Why not resubmit these under new plans? And now, we're talking, it was three lots, if I'm not mistaken, now it's four lots. Now, we're, we're changing everything around, but trying to go by old standards.
I tell you what. Why? It's starting to get a little bit late. We have a, an agenda. We still need to see if people at home wish to address it. We understand your concerns. Why don't we see if we can gather some information over this next month before we meet again, and then deal with it next month?
Thank you, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
No problem. Anybody else here present who wishes to be heard? Anybody participating remotely who wishes to be heard? Raise your hand or send a message, or... I'm not seeing anyone. Going once, going twice. Gone. Okay. So, clearly, we're coming back. So, I would welcome a motion, please, to continue this public hearing until our next meeting, which is when?
March 12.
March 12.
So, movement here.
I have a motion. My Mr. Beckwith, is there a second, please? Seconded by Mr. Glenn. I will call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yep.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. All right. So, this public hearing will be continued to March 12, 2025, where we'll begin to review... I'm sorry, what did you say was on, going to be on, from March 12? I sort of-
That's for the special-
The special-
Special permit. Okay. So, for March 12, I want to make sure that everybody understands, the applicant has just filed a special permit for basically reduced parking. And because it's public, it's a special permit request, there has to be a public hearing, which I think we're going to deal with in a matter of minutes or whatever, which-
At some point in this meeting.
At some point, okay. Maybe not minutes. But the likelihood is that will be scheduled for March 12. So, that will deal with the parking issue that so many of you have referenced tonight, at least in part. So, that's basically what will be on the agenda that night. So, we will reconvene on this matter in another month. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, does anybody need a break, or we all want to plow through? Hmm? Okay. Can we take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right. How about a motion? Second? All right, I got a vote. We're going to vote on a, don't go anywhere, Marcus. Board members at home, we, people want to just take a five-minute break, so we return at 8:00?
Sure.
Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nate Lewis? Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Okay, we'll be back in five minutes.
Sarah Bartley. You're describing Sarah Ellen Flannery?
Oh, you know what, that's me, it's my microphone, they got it.
Oh, and my microphone, I wonder.
Shall we do it all again?
Madam Chair, I move that we reconvene to me.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Gomes. I'll call the roll for a vote, Sarah Bartley.
I'm here.
Are you voting yes so that we can resume our meeting?
Yes, we can resume our meeting.
Thank you. Because, you know, Wayne really wants us to get moving. So Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glynn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
At last, yes.
Yes, Mr. Backwith?
Yes.
All right, Hutchinson, yes. All right, so we're back. Next agenda item is... Let's see, number six. Continue public comment period on concept plans. Open space residential design, OSRD. This is the initial review application. It's number 12-24. For the properties located at 184 and 186 Hart Street. The applicant is C.S. Hart LLC. Once again, we're looking at the three concept plans, each showing seven residential lots. And we are working our way towards determining a concept plan. Would that be right?
Preferred plan.
Preferred plan, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Good evening, Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, and on behalf of the applicants here, as you can see. And at our December meeting, there was a... We had a little discussion back and forth about site distance along Hart Street. And you asked that we make some measurements of site distance for the various driveways. So we retained Vanoss Associates, Inc., a well-respected and well-known traffic engineering company, to do those measurements. In early January, Vanoss set up a 48-hour recorder in the project vicinity to observe traffic volumes and traffic speeds. They determined that the 85th percentile speed of northbound traffic was 33 miles per hour. So people are trying to get out of town at about 33 miles an hour. And they're getting in-town a little slower, 31 miles per hour. And that 85th percentile number is important because we then use the speed to determine the site distance, the stopping site distance. And stopping site distance is just generally, it's a measurement intended to provide the... How should I phrase this correctly? Provide a safe distance to anticipate and avoid collision. So if you were trying to get out of Beverly and you're coming along Hart Street, you'd be looking in a northbound direction, driving in a northbound direction. You'd see those driveways on your left-hand side. And at 33 miles per hour, the 85th percentile speed, you would need 226 feet to, you know, see that obstacle and stop in a safe manner. And it's a little bit less in the southbound direction, which was 31 miles per hour, 206 feet. So the Vanoss report, basically, they went up to every single driveway location. You can see, that's my sort of handwritten notes there on the right-hand side there. But basically, we have options A, B, and C. And option A has, I think, six curb cuts. And so, starting at the bottom of the page, working your way up, you've got A1, A2, A3, and so on. We've got, you know, B1, B2, B3, and then C1 through 5 also. And some of them sort of pair up. So A1 and B1 are the same location. And so, in their report, they provided site distance measurements in both a northbound and a southbound direction for each of those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 locations. And basically, they found that they all meet it. So we have adequate site distance at all driveway locations. I would tell you that the longest site distance measurements are those at the bottom of the page. So the A1, B1, C1 area has approximately 500 feet, I think, in the southbound direction. And I think approximately 400 feet in the northbound direction. And the worst location was the, I think, the C2 location, which was, I think, 240 feet or something like that. So just a little bit more than is necessary for the stopping site distance at that location. I think what was more instructive to me, though, was in the process of looking at all of these nine driveway locations, it became clear that because we own the entire frontage on the left side of the road, about 700 feet of frontage, and because there's no real topographic change over that distance, we have the opportunity to remove any vegetation necessary to provide, you know, even better than the minimum stopping site distance at all of these driveway locations. So they're all, they all meet the criteria. But I think even, we're going to make it even better than that by clearing vegetation in the front yards as the, as development work occurs. And so I think that sort of summarizes the Vanoss issues. I think, you know, getting back to the idea of a preferred plan, you know, we, at this point, I think we have a recommendation from the Conservation Commission for A, the open space, I think, preferred A. A was our preferred plan. There was a memo from the property owner at number 200. He prefers C. And frankly, I think that, you know, if you compare C and A, they're not hugely different. There doesn't seem to be anybody, at this point, batting for B that I'm aware of. But I think A has a little less neighborhood impact than C. I think it, both A and C maintain the existing building at 186, which is, I think, valuable. I think the 25-foot track buffer is met pretty much the same, you know, the north and south ends. And, but I think A has slightly less site, overall site disturbance. And I think it's a little bit easier to make the stormwater work with A than C because we have a little bit lower density of work at the southern end of the site where we have shallow groundwater. And so I think it's a little easier for that reason. And I'd be happy to address any questions.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the speeds that were done for the site distance were actually not taken from the posted speed limit, but someone physically went out there and measured the speed of the cars for a period of 48 hours or so, you said?
Right, we put a 48-hour recorder in the, basically, the middle of the project area. And so we used that 48-hour recording to determine that the 85th percentile speed was the numbers that I cited. The posted speed on this street is 25 miles per hour. So it's, you would end up with a lower site distance requirement with that 25 mile an hour number as compared to the 33 and the 31 mile per hour numbers that I cited.
Thank you.
Okay, questions for Mr. Griffin?
Just out of curiosity, over the 48 hours, how many total vehicles? Do you have that number?
I don't have that number, sorry.
Can we talk waivers?
Sure.
Can you walk us through, once again, slowly, please, the waivers that you're looking for as we determine a preferred plan?
So I think with all of the alternatives, we were requesting a waiver from the requirement to measure or to locate all trees with a diameter at breast height greater than 10 inches. And, you know, we have a pretty, it's an 11-acre site, so it's a good-sized site. We've got, you know, probably about half of it is not going to be touched by development. And so if you have to go out and start measuring and locating all of these 10-inch diameter trees that aren't going to get touched anyways, seems like a wasteful effort. And so we had suggested in our original transmittal that we would locate significant trees in the areas to be disturbed. And so that's, that's a request. And that's the reason for it. The second request had to do with the disturbance in the 100-foot conservation buffer areas. So we have, you know, these ponds, and we have these 100-foot zones around the ponds and the wetlands surrounding the ponds. And in some cases, there's already disturbance in those areas. So for example, if you look at, you know, where 184 Hart Street is, and even portions of 186, you know, the house and the garage and the driveway are already in those buffer zones. And so we're proposing, we're suggesting that we should be allowed to leave those existing disturbances as they are, although it may not necessarily meet the letter of the regulation in that, you know, you want the conservation areas or the buffer areas, you know, left untouched. We also are proposing, at least in the case of option A, to have some new disturbance in the buffer zone for lots 3, 4, and 5. In this case... I can't read that one either. 3 is the, 3 is the house, the third one up from the bottom. Lot 5 is the existing...
Okay, Mr. Griffin, you've got to slow this down because you're racing through this stuff and we're like scrambling trying to find out where you are.
Sorry.
I'm just going to ask you to slow this down. This is important, walk us through it.
So... Can I go over there?
Yeah, please. Just speak loudly.
We should turn on that.
Or turn on that microphone that's at the end there. Sorry.
Hold on. Can you have a handheld or anything?
Yeah, yeah, hold on. It's a little bigger, maybe I fall off this chair.
Sorry.
Okay, so this, you know, the underlying graphic here is option A. And so here's lot 3. And so we have some new disturbances driveway. And this house is bigger than the existing house. And so part of our waiver is to allow us to build lot 3 in the manner that's shown here. So we have new disturbance in the 100-foot buffer zone. Here's the 100-foot buffer zone line here. And the same thing occurs in lot 4. We have a house in lot 4. And it looks like a little bit of the work around the house would fall in that 100-foot buffer zone. So there'd be some new work there. And there might, I don't really see a whole lot of disturbance in lot 5 here, other than the existing disturbance that I referred to before. But that was the reason for the waiver. Lot 2, here's the 100-foot buffer zone line. You can see the part... The R45 requirement, I think, is 175 feet of frontage. And what the OSRD regulation says, that if you have a... Obviously, with the OSRD regulation, you're allowed to reduce area frontage on new lots that front on streets that are created in the OSRD regulation. In this case, lot 5 would be located on Hart Street, which is an existing street. And so we have to have a waiver from that provision that it will allow us to have a reduced area frontage for that lot.
Mr. Griffin, wouldn't that apply to all of the lots that front Hart Streets? Since none of the lots are being created or are being fronted on a street that's created by an OSRD street?
So I think the difference is, if you look at lots 1, 2, and 3, which are in the R15 area, each of those lots are at least 15,000 square feet in size. And they all have more than 125 feet of frontage.
Sorry, you're talking about lots 4, 6, and 7, though, right? Because they're drawing their frontage from Hart Street, on plan A at least, right?
So lot 4, 6, and 7 have adequate area. But, I don't know, they all not successful. 4 and 7 have adequate area, 6 does not. And they have reduced frontage on Hart Street. So you're right.
Mr. Griffin, are we always speaking to concept plan A? Am I correct?
That's correct. I think the same issues arise on plan C. We have, you know, frontage along Hart Street. I think with plan C, it's a little bit different in that lots 1, 2, and 3 have frontage on the stub roadway that we're proposing. Lot 4 has, it looks like insufficient frontage for the R45 district, but has 147 feet versus, I think, 175, again, for the R45 district.
Okay.
I suppose it might have enough in the R15 district. And then lots 6 and 7... Lot 6 does not have sufficient frontage and sufficient area. Lot 7 doesn't have sufficient frontage in the R45 district. And they are on Hart Street. And lot 5, again, the existing house.
Yeah. Which is what, 114? 114. And also, in concept C, Mr. Griffin, there's no, excuse me, track buffer with lots 1 and 2?
You're correct. We did ask for, we didn't think we had room on lots 1 and 2 to provide the 25-foot track buffer on the south side of those two lots. The track buffer waiver also shows up on lots 6 and 7 in option C, and in lots 4, 6, and 7 on option A, where the, where the, where you get close to Hart Street. So the lots get narrow, and the new driveway will go through that space. So we no longer can maintain the 25 foot through the entire northern perimeter of the site. I don't think it is significant in that there's no... You know, there's no adjacent dwellings to that portion of the property line.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
You're welcome.
Are there additional waivers? Madam Chair?
Damned if I know.
I know, that's why I was looking.
I think that's the extent of what we had outlined in our application.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin, do you have a list of the waivers? Are they, where can we find them in one document?
If you've got...
They're in the application.
The letter from us, from...
In the letter.
Yeah, okay.
Which is... Thank you.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, let's, it seems to me, and I'm not ruling out anything else, but it seems to me that everybody, certainly the applicant preferred A.
Yes.
And I think it was sort of the consensus of the board that A was the way we were leaning. So let's focus on A for the time being. And I want to walk through these with questions directed towards the waivers that are applicable to plan, Plan A. So tell me why, Mr. Griffin, we should waive the 25-wide track buffer.
So I think for A, the 25-foot wide track buffer applies at the, at the northern end of the tract in an area where, you know, we're going to have a common driveway come out where that hand is waving there. So I think the absence of a 25-foot wide track buffer in that area doesn't really hurt anybody. I don't think it causes significant issues to any, to the neighborhood. And I would note that as you go further to the west, you know, where that, the 25-foot track buffer exists along most of that distance. In fact, it runs all the way, all the way to the end of the lot. And then it comes back on the underside of lot 7 as well to our neighbor, to the south there, the 140 Hart Street property. So we do meet the 25-foot track buffer, I think, certainly the intent of it, along that lot 7 area.
Right, that's right.
It does not run into that. It doesn't come around that because that's where their driveway is. They stop at there, so they don't have a 25-foot buffer like in that spot. So that's all that's being waived.
So this is just the part that's being waived? So not the entire buffer is being waived?
Just the section near Hart Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that was my question.
And you can see, we meet the 25-foot wide track buffer on lot 1.
Okay, so, all right. So that clears up that issue, at least for me. So that's good, thank you, all right. Okay, does your waiver for, does your waiver that we just discussed for that 25-track buffer specifically talk about it just being in that location? Because I see, I see here, for reasons described above, the applicant requests waivers for strict compliance with the OSRD requirement for a 20-foot wide track buffer area and 100-foot wide primary conservation area buffer. So to me, that seems very broad. And if you're telling me it's very limited, unless I'm missing something?
Yeah, but I, but I think the, the application clearly references, you know, concept plan A here. And so I, I think the plan is specific and defines the extent of track buffer waiver, or where the track buffer would be, exist and where it won't exist.
I think Madam Chair is referring to the 100-foot buffer waiver.
I see, okay.
Yes, I think Madam Chair was referring to what was the 100-foot buffer waiver, not the 25-foot track buffer waiver in that question.
Okay, as noted on the preferred plan, existing buffer area disturbances on lot 3, 4, and 5 will remain. This is on the, on the Plan A as well, Mr. Griffin?
Well, and clearly, there are, you know, there's existing disturbances in lots 3, 4, and 5 that are in that buffer zone, and those are to remain. So I think that's an accurate statement.
Okay, so we start with that. New buffer area disturbance is proposed on lots 2 and 3.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any approval for disturbance in that 100-foot buffer area would require Conservation Commission approval?
That's correct, yeah.
When you're talking about waivers requested to allow lots with reduced size and frontage on a street other than one created by OSRD, is that only applicable to 186 Hart Street? Or is that also applicable to lots 4, 6, and 7?
Yeah, I think it's also applicable to 4, 6, and 7.
And can I ask, why didn't you increase the size? Given the size of lot 7, why, why is lot 6 drawn such that it doesn't meet the, the area size?
I mean, I suppose we could have put a little tail on 6 going out to the, to the west. But, you know, lot 7 gets very narrow as it goes to the west. And so the fact that there's some extra area on lot 7, you know, it brings the area up, but it doesn't really make the lot more buildable or a better lot necessarily. I think we tried to space the three new houses out somewhat equidistantly in the buildable area. And so that's how we ended up with these three locations. And remember, you know, the whole OSRD process, the idea is not necessarily to have, to be driven by area or frontage. It's to, you know, put the houses where they make sense and draw the lot lines last.
Okay, thank you for that. How's everybody feeling about these, first of all, these waivers as they're applicable to Plan A?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
They seem reasonable to me, actually. The, and Plan A would be my preference of the three for a preferred plan. And, I mean, the, allowing the... And, I mean, the, allowing the existing disturbances, to me, doesn't do any additional harm. We still have the Conservation Commission is going to review these, right? But, you know, they just, they just seem to, to address smaller issues. That's in terms of the frontage and the, and the buffer zone. And then the, the waiver on the identifying the trees, you know, throughout the entire area. To me, it makes sense to identify the trees in the areas that are going to be subject to the, the construction, so. I just am wondering, in terms of language, if we were to get to a point of doing the waivers today, but would not, we have enough to be able to, to do that? That's where I am.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Flannery?
I concur with Mr. Beckwith and his observations, as well as knowing the Conservation Commission will also be looking at this relative to the waiver. Thank you, Mr. Clausen. That's why I was, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with the A as the preferred plan, knowing what you just explained. Thank you.
All right, so to move this along, is everybody comfortable with Plan A? I'm getting a nod from Nate. I know.
I am, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. George, you're pretty quiet down there.
Sorry.
No, but, no, I apologize.
Think I'm okay? Maybe Ken can help me interpret our zoning code once again.
I'll try.
Sorry. So the request under, for the reduced area and frontage, so this is 354 G1.
Yeah.
There are two different ways you can satisfy this. You can create, shall not apply in the case of lots created by an A and R, nor should it apply to lots created by subdivision plan if its application would conflict with the purposes or with other provisions of this OSRD. We're doing the second here, presumably, right? This wouldn't be an A and R. Okay, so in granting that, the board has to decide that the application of that requirement would conflict with the purposes or with other provisions of the OSRD, right? That's what we're being asked to decide on that particular waiver.
What I think that particular waiver is asking is that these lots are going to have frontage on an existing street, not a street that's been created by an OSRD. So like on Concept B, there is a street.
Yep.
There's no street here, just a shared driveway, which I think in an OSRD, up to six houses can share one shared driveway. So the less we want to add a street which kind of conflicts with the purpose of what an OSRD does, that, that's why this waiver is necessary because these lots aren't being fronted, do not have frontage on a street created through this OSRD process.
Yep. And I, I'm, you know, gathering the, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking already on this project about what the purpose of OSRD is, right?
Right.
Including during this meeting. So I, I think I'm comfortable with that. Thank you for explaining that for me.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I have one question for yourself or for Mr. Clausen relative to Lisa Chandler's note dated January 29. She answered number three on the, of her comments from her letter dated December 10. Did she have anything to offer Mr. Clausen relative to point number one?
I don't have that letter in front of me. Hold on.
Okay. It's, it's December 10. There were four points, and she responded to number three, but did not to number one. And I was just curious if there were relative to the easement. Excuse me.
That wasn't a, that was a question more for the applicant, not for us. No one has really addressed that comment.
Okay.
As far as, as I know.
All right.
Are you talking about comment one or comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Comment one.
Yep.
And only because when I read her note, Mr. Clausen, I didn't see a response, whether it be from us or from the applicant. Thank you.
I believe it's been mentioned that Mr. Griffin had said before that it has a right to pass as motor vehicles.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
I think that's something that, you know, the, the letter from the Engineering Department says it should be addressed prior to proceeding with A or C. Not necessarily needs to be resolved at this point in time. And so we will look at that further.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I appreciate that.
There were also additional comments made in that engineering letter that referenced fire department turnaround. In an OSRD, the long shared driveway would need to be built to the minimum NFPA standards for fire department turnaround. It doesn't necessarily require a cul-de-sac. It would just have to have something that is acceptable by the fire department than the NFPA for a fire truck to be able to turn around at the end of those driveways.
Is that a condition for now or a condition for site plan?
That can be a condition for now.
Well, I, I think at the site plan stage, we're going to be, you know, laying out the driveways and the turning movements a little bit more carefully. And so I think we can address that at the site plan stage. You know, looking at Lots 6 and 7, it looks like you could arrange the driveways in a manner so that you could have some sort of a hammerhead, you know, turnaround area at, at that location. But certainly that hammerhead is not shown on the plan at this point in time.
Has there been any discussion yet as to who would hold the open space entity?
Uh, no.
Board members, are you prepared to vote on the waivers? The idea would be to vote on waivers first and then move to, to a vote for a preferred plan. And I just want to know if people are comfortable voting on both.
I am, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, this is technically a public comment period. You can hear public comment if you want. It's not required.
Would you like me to hear public comment?
It's entirely up to you. I just wanted to remind you.
Okay, sure. Before we, I guess, move to that, is there anybody here in the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Your name and address, sir?
My name is Tucker. I'm at 200 Hart Street, the direct butter to 184 to 186 Hart Street. So last meeting in December, I shared my support for Plan C, and I wanted to reiterate a few points about what I spoke to in the last meeting is why I feel, you know, Plan C is a better plan option than A. My first point is open space. I know in the, the presentation a few minutes ago, it said that Plan A had more open space than the other plans. But based on the, the site plans, Plan C is actually the plan with larger open space, which I know that the, the board strongly favors or appreciates more open space in plans. My next point is neighborhood consistency. In a recent meeting in either November or December, Ms. Hutchinson, you know, pointed out that Plan C most effectively keeps with neighborhood consistency, keeping the, you know, the smaller denser homes down closer to Dire Road and the more, in the other homes with, instead of three homes, it's two homes closer to, you know, the top of those plans. And then third, most importantly, overall safety of the plan. I know the, in the, the most recent, or the, the presentation, the sightline, each driveway meets sightlines. But closer to my driveway at 200 Hart Street is, you know, the more dangerous section of that road with the, with the shortest sightline. And, you know, the bottom of the, the plan closer to Dire Road, the sightlines were double the, what it was. I think it was 500 compared to 250 for sightlines. So in my opinion, it would make more sense to have more homes in a better sightlined area versus more homes in an area with shorter sightlines, which in Plan A, there'd be more homes in an area of the shortest sightline versus Plan C where there'd be less homes and more homes in the, the 500-foot area of sightlines. Other, other key points as to why Plan C is a, is a better overall plan than A. There's fewer curb cuts, so that creates less conflict areas and less points of traffic entering and exiting Hart Street. Just reading over a few notes here. So yeah, so the, the fewer curb cuts obviously just creates a safer environment. And with that, you know, I think Plan C is better as, versus Plan A because the two homes closer to 200 Hart Street at the top of the plan creates, you know, less conflict with the, the smaller or the shorter sightline distances versus pushing for three homes in an area of, of double the sightlines. So I know, I know it seems that the board, you know, favors Plan A. But in my opinion, Plan C, based on overall safety and, you know, just the fact that there's more open space is, is in fact a, a better plan. And I guess I'd like to, you know, learn more from the board as to why Plan, they seem to favor Plan A versus Plan C. It seems that, you know, there's no real explanation as to why Plan A and the board's opinion is, is better versus Plan C. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to offer a response as to why Plan A, in your opinion, is more the better choice?
Yes, I will as well, Madam Chair.
To me, the letter dated December 12 from the Open Space and Recreation Committee and their, their comments about Concept A were, they were impactful for me.
Can you hit the highlights of them just for the record?
The committee prefers Concept A as it keeps the proposed open space parcel contiguous with the neighboring luring conservation restriction on the property located at 140 Hart Street. The committee believes that the ownership options suggested by the applicant for future open space are reasonable. The committee requests that there be public access to the proposed open space parcel. The committee requests that there be a restriction on the use of lawn chemicals. And they had a couple of other conditions here. But, but their view, and being the Open Space Committee, their view on the way, the flow of the, the layout itself. And to me, and I look at that as opposed to a, a stacked, I would call it stacked on C.
Yep.
With creating a small, an additional road with really tight, there were questions about access for fire equipment, things like that. I do remember that, that part of the discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Flannery?
I would speak to the positivity of the Conservation Commission's letter dated October 16, 2024. They speak to three points, and the third point is the Commission's preferred plan is Concept Plan A. In A, they state of all the plans, Concept A has the least amount of work proposed within the jurisdictional buffer zones, and there are no homes proposed between the Greenbelt Conservation Restriction Land and the Lower Pond slash Burnell Pool. Per thus leaves a larger swath contiguous open space. They speak to B, uh, excuse me, letter B. Concept C is the Commission's second most preferred option because there is a minimal amount of proposed work within the jurisdictional buffer zones. The reason this is the second preference is due to the extra proposed driveway areas on Lots 1, 2, and 3 being within the buffer zone where Concept A has less proposed driveway work within the buffers. And they speak to, in C, they speak to, Concept B is their least desirable option.
Thank you, Ms. Flannery.
You're very welcome, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Happy to add my own thoughts as well. I appreciate the comment. It was really thoughtful. I, I would say, I think on, on my end, we have heard also from people on Dire Road who are concerned about proximity to them. And Option C does put several homes within that buffer zone, which is, or Project C, excuse me. Looks like Ken's about to interrupt me.
Yeah, I was going to say that this, Concept C does not provide for the 25-foot track buffer between those lots and the lots on Dire Road.
Right, so we've already talked about, and that was mentioned in the Conservation Agent's letter as well. We've already talked about a, a really minor intrusion, for lack of a better term, into that buffer in, in Plan A. Plan C, it's significant, much more significant, in my opinion. You know, understanding as the, you know, I, I guess from, from my perspective, even in Plan A, although there are three homes on the sort of northern half of the site, they are all on the sort of southern end of the shared driveway. They're, you know, pretty far away from the property line, relatively speaking. So that seems like it's less of an intrusion than the, than the two homes in Project C would be, you know, kind of right up on, on Dire Road. So that'd be kind of my thought there.
Thank you, George. Very helpful. Anybody else here who wishes to make a public comment?
I, I just want to note that I, if I misspoke earlier in regards to the amount of open space between A and C, that I apologize. I, I would note that the no disturb area for A is slightly larger than the no disturb area for Option C. So I think that's, that's preferable. And the reason that Option A has less open space than Option C is that when you look at the lot line about, you know, where it's drawn around the pond, in the case of Option A, which is what you're looking at there, you can see that the line goes sort of straight across the pond underneath Lots 4, 6, and 7. And in the option C, it sort of runs up and around the 100-foot buffer zone line. So I don't think it really provides useful open space necessarily, the fact that it has a little bit more in C than A. So just my thoughts in that, in that regard. I do think there's less site disturbance in, in Option A versus Option C.
Thank you. I thought I saw someone who wanted to be heard.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Before we have this gentleman, I do, I do want to say to Mr., and I apologize for not knowing how to pronounce your last name. Mizitz?
Close, yeah, Mizitz.
Miss, okay, thank you very much for both your comment tonight and for your email that you sent to Ken, which was shared with all of us. It was just really very well-written and well-presented, and I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Scott McKenzie, 7 Dire Road, one of the directed butters on Dire Road. You know, for myself and my neighbors, you know, out of all the plans, I think Plan A is the preferred plan. And I think one of the things you've heard from myself and others that have spoken have been, you know, in regards to water issues, rain issues. From our perspective, you know, Plan C, you know, jams in three houses right up on the backside of us, along with the driveway. All that runoff's going to slightly go down because there is a little bit of a pitch downhill, you know, especially to where I am. And so, you know, at least on Plan A, you're leaving that 25-foot, you know, buffer tract, as you said, and the houses there, you know, a little bit more spread out, not jammed on top. top of us. So, you know, just because our neighborhood might be a little denser than some of the other areas doesn't need, you know, mean that we need to add to that, nor hopefully, you know, add to any, you know, water problems with, you know, greater runoff coming, you know, off of, you know, Plan C where things seem to be jammed in more. So, just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Is there anybody participating remotely who wishes to be heard on the matter? Or wishes to comment on the matter, I should say.
I have an email comment.
Okay.
I have a question from Michael Di Giuseppe for you, Mr. Griffin. He was unable to attend tonight, so he asked me to relay this via an email. He said he previously emailed you and the applicant and their engineer were sent emails requesting a neighborhood meeting over a month ago, and he has not received a response. And he was requesting that the board not vote on a preferred plan until a meeting with them happened.
I personally think that Mr. Di Giuseppe has done a good job of putting forth his concerns about the project and his comments. I don't think it's appropriate for me to meet with him directly. I think it's really the applicant's desire, you know, job to do that, and then Mr. Carvalho has been laid up with some surgery and been out of town, so he just really hasn't had an opportunity to do that. I know that he does intend to meet with him in the future. And I don't think it necessarily needs, that meeting needs to be precedent to making a decision on A versus B versus C.
Did the applicant ever meet with the neighborhood?
I don't think we had a, we certainly invited people to come to the site walk, but we didn't have a neighborhood meeting, you know, at a house or anything like that.
That's a little disappointing, on a plan of this size and knowing how it would impact Dire Road. It, I would have frankly thought the first thing, amongst the first things you would have done, is talk to the Dire Road people and see how they felt about it.
Okay.
But thank you. Okay, so let's move this along. Are we set to move on waivers? Is there anything else?
I don't know.
Okay, you're just banging over there, so. Is everybody ready to vote on waivers? Let me ask. Okay, I would welcome a motion if we're ready to do so. Give it a shot.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to try to channel as much George Gomes as possible in me, because he's terrific at these motions. But there are three waivers requested, and I move that the board grant the following waivers to the applicant.
Let me ask you this, do we need, should we do them individually?
I can do that.
I think just to be safe, do them individually?
Sure.
Okay.
And before I start that, I just wanted to say that I'm phrasing them in terms of, I guess they would be for, it's in and around Concept A. So.
Mr. Griffin, are your waivers specifically designated for a specific plan, or do they general?
I think the waivers are a little bit different from plan to plan. I don't really have a tally for A versus B versus C at my fingertips here, but I think the plans sort of speak for themselves.
The, you can request, the waivers are requested for, by a specific section of the ordinance, so you don't necessarily need to be hyper-specific as to what you're doing. So like for Section 300-54-F3B2, that is strict compliance for the 25-foot track buffer area. So that would apply to A or C, I don't know if it's in B or not.
Can I make a suggestion, excuse me, make a suggestion that procedurally, I think what you could do is refer to the letter, a waiver under section, et cetera, as reflected on Concept Plan A. Because those waivers are specifically called out on the concept plans, if that makes sense.
Yep, to me it does.
Yeah, that's fine.
And getting to the third one, when we get to that, it has the frontage and the square foot dimensions that are in there, so we don't have to be specific necessarily, right?
I believe you're correct.
Okay, so I'll give this.
So basically, just finish them all with as reflected on Concept A?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Move that the board grant the applicant waiver from, for Section 300-54 dot F3B2 to, as reflected in Concept Plan A on Sheet C-4A in the, in the schematics given to us, allowing for relief from the track buffer area requirement in the northeast corner of the lot for common driveway access. Also reflecting that existing buffer area disturbances on lots three, four, and five will remain and allowing new buffer area disturbance as proposed on lots two and three within the 100-foot wide primary conservation area buffer.
Is that it?
That's it.
That was good.
Second.
What was that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. We have a motion by Mr. Beckwith on the first waiver and a second by Mr. Gomes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller? You might have lost Wayne. Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Okay, motion passes with, we'll have, what, Wayne abstaining, I guess? Okay.
That would be, that would be, he wouldn't be abstained if it'd be seven, zero.
Okay, so not even count him, you mean? Okay.
I move that the board grant the applicant a waiver from Section.
He's back.
Pardon me?
He's back, sorry.
Okay, keep going.
Move that the board grant the applicant a waiver from Section 300-54 dot F3B8, granting relief from this section, allowing the applicant to map significant trees in the areas to be disturbed, but not requiring the mapping of trees greater than 10 inches DBH within areas not to be disturbed.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Wait a minute, hold on.
As delineated in the Concept A plan on Sheet C-4A of the schematics provided to the board.
Would you like a second, Madam Chair?
I would love a second, Ms. Flannery.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes, all right, that passes.
We can say he abstained from that one. He's in. He's in.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the board grant a waiver to the applicant from Section 300-54 dot G1 to allow, to allow lots with reduced area and frontage as delineated in the, on Sheet C-4A for Concept Plan A.
Okay, you specified the.
Reduced area and frontage, I said, right?
Yep. And you specified the section, okay. Is there a second for this motion, please?
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Are we ready to, people ready to vote on a preferred plan? All right, we'd welcome a motion on that, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
With respect to OSRD initial review application number 12-24, 184 and 186 Hart Street, I move that the board find Concept A of, on Sheet C4A of the schematics provided in the application as the preferred plan.
Thank you. Are there any conditions we have for this? Or do we save them for next steps? My sentiments exactly.
We'd be conditioning a site plan approval, right? I mean, the site plan doesn't exist yet, right?
That's why I just want to make sure before we go through this and.
To me, that seems like something you'd do when you have something that's actually going to be built, right?
I just want to make sure that we haven't.
Because this is not a buildable plan.
We're not misstepping, that's all.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The last page of the staff report by Mr. Clausen, the last paragraph.
The board at this time is just choosing the preferred plan.
The preferred plan will then become a fully engineered OSRD site plan and definitive subdivision plan, at which time many of the concerns of the butters can be further reviewed and addressed.
All right, so, so everybody's comfortable with no conditions at this point in time, knowing full well that site plan can, can be full of conditions if we so desire?
And that the applicant sees, may have seen the, the conditions requested and suggested by the various boards who've responded.
Yeah, when it moves to full site plan, there's a much more thorough city department review, they'll provide their standard comments and conditions.
Madam Chair, I'm comfortable with what's been presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more discussion on this? There's been a motion, it's been seconded. Any more discussion? None, I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Who's gone again?
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. So Preferred Plan A, it is. And I think that ends that matter for the evening, right?
Yes, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, do you have any timing on when you might be able to be submitting your?
Site line?
Yeah.
I don't think it's going to be in the next two or three weeks.
Thank you. Or three weeks or months?
No, the next two or three weeks.
Okay. Oh, perfect. Take your time.
For those members of the public still here and those watching at home, just want to thank everybody for weighing in with comments as to Concept Plan. This is only step one in the process, so please continue to be engaged in the process as we, as we review the site plan and we get more into the plans in more depth. Attorney Smasco, thank you for all your help as always. Good night. Okay. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, okay, so we're at number seven. Set a public hearing for special permit 201-2540 Trask Lane. The applicant is Corcoran Trask Lane LLC. This would be a special permit to reduce the parking requirement from 2.0 spaces per unit to 1.6 spaces per unit and to allow shared parking for 1,050 square feet of retail space at the project for spaces, together with such relief that may be required to authorize the proposed parking layout and design of parking areas for the project.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the public hearing for this matter be set for March 12, 2025.
Is there a second for that motion, please?
I'll second.
I saw Mr. Glenn.
Oh.
He waved his hand. I just want to make sure that everybody understands this special permit application. They're basically, Trask Lane people are coming back to ask us for special permit reducing the amount of parking that is, has been required or is required via the zoning requirement. They laid the foundation for this, not at this meeting, but at the past meeting, I think, I think it was two meetings ago, actually. The December meeting in which they talked about the parking up there, and they presented us with comparables, other, other large apartment buildings, and talked about the amount of parking they had, and they were frankly making the case for us to adopt a smaller number. So that will be what they're looking for this time. So we'll have the public hearing that night. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
You saying yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes, all right. Where are we next? Agenda item number eight is to adopt the fiscal year 2025 fee in lieu of affordable housing units. We have to update Table 1 per Chapter 315 of the Inclusionary Housing Regulations. What that means, Marcus, and for anybody else interested, is one of the options is one of the options that's available to an applicant, such as Trask Lane tonight, they usually are asked to provide, as you heard tonight, I think it was 12% of the units have to be affordable. There's an option within our regulations that allow them to... Is it by special permit, I think, isn't it? Fee in lieu of?
I think so.
That they can request to make a payment, a payment in lieu of providing the affordable housing. They can basically make a payment. It goes to the Beverly, I think, there's a housing trust. It doesn't get used that often. I think in my experience, it's been used once or twice. In those two occasions, it was granted because the location for which they would have to cite the affordable housing was an area that already had a lot of affordable housing. So they asked for permission, so to speak, to make a payment in lieu of, and it was granted. It's generally, rarely used, but it's always an option.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, if I may. I think it's only eligible on homeownership projects. It's not eligible for rentals. So that's another reason why it doesn't get used very often.
Oh, okay.
And Ken shared something with us that said it's only been used twice. Your recollection was correct.
Well, thank you for being so on top of the details.
It was used at the 2 Hardy Street project and the 461 Rantool project back in 2016 and 2018.
I remember the Hardy Street one. Wasn't it also used by Keller Hirsch Pond?
No, it was Rantool Street, Ellen.
Okay.
And then those credit units were, that wasn't even a fee in... Hold on, that was, no, those are credit units. Fee in lieu was, I'm sorry, those are credit units. Fee in lieu was, I think you're right, Pondview Lane, one Elliott Landing, and Congress Street. Those are fee in looms. Yep. The other ones were, I'm sorry, they were credit units.
So I was right?
Yes.
So you should have in your papers what the, what the fee, how the fee is calculated. I remember it used to be a really complicated formula.
It still is.
Okay. But I thought we tried, I thought we simplified it.
We did, but it's still not, it's still fun.
Okay.
Is it still complicated?
It's equal to...
Mind-numbing spreadsheets.
35% of the median of all single-family home or condominium sale prices in the specific Beverly neighborhood in which an applicant is developing its units for the three fiscal years immediately prior to the current fiscal year in which the application is made. And it goes on. So basically, the idea is that it pays, the applicant pays 35% of what the median sales price has been for the prior three years, basically. So you're trying to capture part of that sales price. I mean, not the whole, the whole of it, it's only 35%. And I think it's pretty, I don't want to say it's straightforward, but it's set forth here. The data here is here, if you want. I hope you have had an opportunity to look at it. And I would welcome a motion to accept or to adopt this schedule.
So move, Madam Chair?
Thank you. Is there a second? Second of my Beckwith, discussion on the motion?
I just have one question.
Sure.
Who's coming up with the names for the descriptions for the districts?
These come from the assessment's office.
This is rude. As a Rylside resident, Rylside average, it says, up in arms. That's all.
I understand that they're looking at the body of housing in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay, so who made the, someone made a motion. Gomes and somebody seconded. Beckwith, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? I will call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller? Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Was that a yes for Wayne? All right. All right, that passes unanimously. Do we want to do this tonight? All right, so number nine is election of 2025 chairperson and vice person. I think I'm supposed to turn this over to you.
Yes, as vice chair, I'll...
Oh, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. As vice chair, I'll handle the section of the meeting where we take nominations and then select a chairperson for the coming year.
Mr. Beckwith?
Yes.
May I nominate Ellen Hutchinson to chair the board for 2025?
Yes, you may. Ellen Hutchinson. Are there any other nominations? I don't believe a nomination needs to be seconded. I think it's just a taking of nominations. So are there any other nominations? Going once, going twice, going three times. Do I have a motion to close nominations for chairperson?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ellen Flannery and seconded by George Gomes. I'll read the roll call. Sarah Bartley? This is to close nominations. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Yes, from Wayne.
Yep.
Derek Beckwith, yes. Ellen Hutchinson, are you voting or are you abstaining?
I'll abstain.
And Ellen Hutchinson abstains. So the vote is seven to nothing with one abstention in favor of closing nominations. We have one nomination, and therefore I will make the...
Would you like me to move, would you like me to motion, Mr. Beckwith?
Yeah, yeah, please. Motion, move the...
I would like...
Yeah.
I would like to move to elect Ellen Hutchinson to chair the 2025 Beverly Planning Board.
Is there a second? George Gomes, seconded. And all those in favor, I'll read the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Yay.
Derek Beckwith, yes. And Ellen Hutchinson, are you voting?
I'll abstain.
Abstaining. So congratulations, Ms. Hutchinson, chairperson. Hutchinson, you've been elected seven to nothing with one abstention.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
And I don't have to buy a new gavel.
Yeah. Can't do it without you guys. You guys are awesome. I will take this back. And we now move to elect a vice chairperson. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Derek Beckwith to vice chair the 2025 Beverly Planning Board.
Thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Having, hearing none, I will move, I would request a motion to close nominations.
So move.
So.
All right, I'll give that to George with the second to Ms. Flannery. And I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Derek Beckwith?
Abstain.
And he's abstaining. Ellen Hutchinson, yes. All right, motions have been closed. We have a nomination for Derek Beckwith to be vice chair. I'd welcome a motion on this, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move to elect Derek Beckwith to vice chair the 2025 Beverly Planning Board.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I just have to say, they don't come any better. And I mean that sincerely. Can't do this without you guys, and especially without you, Derek, so, thank you. All right, I'll call the roll, please. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Abstain.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. By a seven-to-zero vote, Mr. Beckwith is re-elected to vice chair of the Beverly Planning Board. Thank you so much for all you do. It's greatly appreciated, as is everything you all do here.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, our next agenda item is approval of minutes. I believe you had minutes. We had minutes, right?
Yeah. Ellen emailed me some red lines, her edits, right before the meeting. I haven't had a chance to look at it or do anything with it, but...
So do you want us to hold off, or do you want us to...
We are current, so we can afford to...
Table?
Table it till next month.
Table it till the next month.
All right, sounds like a plan. Do we have any new business? Mr. Clausen?
Nope.
Nope. I just have a question. You were a little concerned when I talked about trying to keep the April meeting as much as possible open for the traffic stuff on Trask Lane.
That was me mostly being joking because of just how busy we've been.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know of nothing, other than the 38 Stanley OSRD that we start next month. I've had no new applications, other than that and the special permit that we just set for Trask.
Where is that OS, where is that with relation to the one that's a little bit further down on Stanley Street?
Next door.
Oh, okay. Is it the same developer?
I don't, no, it's Waring School. Waring School's the developer.
Oh, okay, that's interesting. Okay, it's late, why don't we get everybody out of here? How about a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'll call the roll. Sarah Bartley?
Yes.
Where's my list? Ellen Flannery, as you know us by heart.
Yes.
Marcus Glenn?
Yes.
George Gomes?
Yes.
Nathaniel Lewis? Wayne Miller? Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Everybody, tonight was really difficult, and so I just want to thank you. The Concept Plan in particular, I thought, was difficult, and I don't think it's going to get any easier going down the road. But thank you, these are difficult materials, these are difficult, it's just difficult stuff we're dealing with. So thank you all for your insights and your input, and we'll see you next month. We'll be another month closer to springtime.
Yes.
Amen.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. And congratulations to you.
Hope you all, those of you at home, I hope you feel better.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, and good night.
Thank you all. Bye.